You're watching Cable 2.
Three Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance and also say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing as you are able for a moment of silence followed by the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have a moment of silence to honor the eight people who lost their lives and the seven that were injured at the mass shooting at a mall in Allen, Texas on Saturday, May 6th, 2023. Let us pray. Dear God who provides, we ask your blessing upon our efforts at tonight's meeting. It always seems like there's not enough money for all that is needed for our school system and our students. But we are grateful for the many perspectives on this board which give us the strength to make hard but necessary choices. We give thanks that we have a budget that hopefully will be fully funded and allows us to enact the program set forth in our plan. Amen.
Thank you, Board Member Miller. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Coon, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Our next order of business is our student performance. Please join me in welcoming the North Forsyth High School brass quintet.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How y'all doing? Tonight, we're going to be playing two pieces for you all. The first one is "Ode to Joy," the second one is "Santist." We hope you enjoy. This is the NFHS MSOT Brass Quintet. Me and my two senior friends here, Israel and Joshua, and sophomore Jeremiah and Michael Perez. We hope you all enjoy.
While they are taking their, I just wanted to say, Mr. Orr, come out here for just a second. You know, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so I'm going to just tell you. This is the most incredible band director. He has done such great things at North Forsyth High. I just had to recognize you this evening, Christian. Thank you, Mr. Orr.
That was absolutely wonderful. Thank you. Our next order of business is our special recognitions. First, Andrew Kraft, Director of Arts Education and Summer Enrichment, will present the All-State Concert and Jazz Band recognitions.
All right, good evening, Distinguished Board, Madam Chair, Superintendent McManus. The All-State Honor Bands are the highest honors band students. And in North Carolina, students have to go through multiple rounds of auditions to receive a placement in these highly prestigious ensembles. And we're really excited to be able to recognize some of those students tonight. And helping us call out these names is our lead music teacher, Mr. Eugene Mabry. If you'll come on up.
Good evening, everyone. We will now recognize students who have, by audition, participated in North Carolina's All-State Honors Concert Band. And there are also some students here who participated in the North Carolina All-State Jazz Band. And so, let's go ahead and get started with Lydia Berger on trumpet. Eric Chin on clarinet. Matthew Jorth also on trumpet. These students were in the All-State Honors Concert Band. Our next student was in the Concert Band and the Jazz Band, and that is Lucas Holliday Munos on trombone. On string bass, Tyler Lau. On trombone, All-State Concert and All-State Jazz, Karsten McCosco. On baritone saxophone, Aaron Nyberg. On horn, Douglas Nitschi. On drum set for the Jazz Band, Zerrin Sadler. On trombone, All-State Concert and All-State Jazz, and I think he's made them sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, Gabe Sammons. On clarinet, Garrett Sap. On baritone horn, Elizabeth Scott. On tuba, Devin Sealy. On flute, Bobby Severs. All-State Jazz on trumpet, John Schuman. On mallets, Teddy Tennant. On trombone, All-State Concert and All-State Jazz, Ben Valier. On alto saxophone, Thomas Wang. And on flute, Jasmine Ju. Ladies and gentlemen, as we give your final round of applause, the fantastic students are accompanied by their fantastic band directors. If you are a band director in the audience, would you please stand?
Next, Major Richard Sugg, Senior Army JROTC Instructor at West Forsyth, will present the West Forsyth Junior ROTC State and National Championships.
Madam Chairman, Superintendent McManus, thank you very much for allowing us to recognize these outstanding students tonight. Since returning from COVID, West Forsyth High School's Junior ROTC has competed in 13 national finals and has advanced to and will compete in five more this year. In 2023 alone, the Titan Battalion Cadets will have competed in 10 national championships in five widely differing activities. And tonight, thank you for allowing us to recognize their achievements. The JROTC Leadership and Academic Bowl is the premier JROTC academic competition that tests cadets on current events, leadership theory and application, citizenship, health, wellness, and first aid, American history and government, current events, and financial literacy. Of the nearly 1,400 teams from across the country that began in November, only 40 teams remain and will compete in the national finals this June in Washington, DC. They are led by Team Captain Kyler Patterson, and he's joined by Cadets Jack Harrison, Stephen Quach, and Luke Milkie. The West Forsyth High School JROTC Competition Color Guard had another magnificent year, performing in dozens of community events, claiming top honors in several competitions, and earning a third consecutive bid to the National High School Drill Team Championships, where they competed last weekend in Daytona, Florida, and finished 25th in the country. They're led by sophomore Team Captain Riley Lynn, and he is joined by freshman Ellen Fear, Maggie Lee, and Chloe Medina. The West Forsyth High School JROTC Raider Team is the fitness and adventure training activity of the program. And this year's team, after multiple top-tier finishes in qualifying competitions, earned the school's first-ever invitation to the Fourth Brigade Finals last March in Buckingham, Virginia, and have advanced to the national finals to be held later this year in Fort Knox, Kentucky. They are led by co-captains Victoria Piacinto and Donovan Allen. The team includes Vincent Chapman, Joshua Clemmenson, Ricardo Noella Mendez, A.J. Summers, and Claire Swain. The West Forsyth High School JROTC Rifle Team earned many accolades this year, including a North Carolina State Championship, a second place in the Fourth Brigade Championship, third place in the U.S. Southeastern Regionals, fourth place in the U.S. Army Junior Rifle National Championships, sixth place in the Army JROTC National Championships, ninth place in the American Legion National Championships, and 13th place in the JROTC Joint Service Championships. They will compete in both the USA Shooting National Junior Olympics and the Civilian Marksmanship Program National Championships next month in Camp Harriet, Ohio. They are led by Senior Team Captain Debbie Weiser, a two-time North Carolina State Champion, a two-time national finalist, and Junior Distinguished Marksman Number 1657. She's joined on her team by Michaela Baker, a three-time national finalist, Jeremy Clevenger, Logan Feathers, Madeline Gonzalez, Austin McSwain, Avery Parker, Riley Richardson, and Bryce Wensel. In its very first year, the West Forsyth High School JROTC Archery Team competed in the Fourth Brigade Championships held in Charlotte last March and advanced to the Army JROTC National Championships, which will be held tomorrow in Louisville, Kentucky. They are led by Team Captain Donovan Allen. He is joined by Kyler Patterson, Christopher Resendas Lobato, Riley Richardson, Marion Sprecker, Samuel Susan, and Logan Feathers. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a big round of applause for all these outstanding cadets and their remarkable accomplishments.
So I have to make one more comment. Come over here, Major Sugg. So again, Teacher Appreciation Week, we are so blessed. Not only the band directors that were in the room that are teachers in our system, that to me, we have the best band program in the country. I feel the same about our JROTC programs. And we have a lot of retired military that have come back and that teach our kids. And he's incredible. I mean, he goes weekend after weekend, taking them all over the country, competing. And I just want to say thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you.
Next, Kimberly Forbes, Executive Director of CTE, will present the CTE Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, members of the Board, and Superintendent McManus. The North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, also known as NCAT, began the CTE Teacher of the Year Award last year, 2022. It is in its second year. And it was developed to honor and retain excellent CTE teachers and education leaders in North Carolina. I am pleased to announce that Ms. Sarah Shepherd is the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools NCAT CTE Teacher of the Year. And I have to do this fast because they said under two minutes. So, that was hard because she has so many accolades. Sarah's been teaching for over 20 years in 6th through 12th and post-secondary. Currently, she teaches the Pharmacy Technology Program at John F. Kennedy High School. She not only teaches it, but she lives it because in her very little spare time, she works as a pharmacy technician. So she brings that experience into the classroom. She provides the students with the real-world experiential learning. She has established wonderful partnerships in the school and outside of the school, which really benefits our students. Inside the school, she collaborates with a lot of the content teachers to make sure that they're getting the math, the science, the language arts, the social studies in her Health Science Pharmacy Tech program. In the community, I had to write these down, she does the Bridges to Healthcare, which provides our students with the internships, the paid internships. She has the Lead School for Camp Med Forsyth County, the only camp that provides the students the opportunities to explore the health-related professions through the field trips. She works with Wake Forest for the Academics and Professions Leap Program to provide paid internships. And then, she has established through Atrium Health Mentorships for the students as they're going through the program. And she was telling me earlier that they're just asking for the kids, where are the kids? Where are the kids? So it is really good. And on top of that, she is an advisor for HOSA, which is the Health Occupations Students of America, which is a career and technical student organization for CTE programs. Tonight, she is joined by her Assistant Principal, Mr. Timothy Hagden, and our CTE Program Manager that supports Pharmacy Tech, Charlisa Hall. So we're just thankful, and we're looking for her to go to the next step because now she's going to represent us for the state level. So we're really excited. So, thank you.
Next, Katie Key, Director of Nursing, will present the National School Nurses Day Proclamation.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Board Members, and Superintendent McManus. Today, we are here to celebrate the best of the best, our 35 schools' nurses. Here with me today is Katie Key, our Director of Nursing. Ms. Key has been instrumental in leading our school nurses and our district through the pandemic. I would also like to recognize Brooke Hamby, Nursing Supervisor for Forsyth Department of Health, for her support and guidance. School nurses touch the lives of many students and also provide resources to our families. I would like to thank our school nurses for all that they do and the impact that they make daily with our students, families, and staff. Katie will now read the proclamation for National School Nurse Day.
Whereas students are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school. And whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 120 years. And whereas school nurses address the home and community factors that impact students' health. And whereas school nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievement. and lifelong achievements of all students by serving on the front lines and providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children, and whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children, and whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak, and whereas school nurses are members of school-based teams like School Health Services 504 IEP Disaster and Emergency Planning, providing care coordination to address the school population, and whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day, therefore be it resolved that the National Association of School Nurses celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere and their efforts to meet the needs of today's students by providing and advocating for quality, student-centered care and offers gratitude for the nation's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by supporting students to stay healthy, in school, safe, and ready to learn, and keeping parents and guardians at work, not just on this National School Nurse Day, but in every opportunity throughout the year. Therefore, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and the Board of Education do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 10, 2023, as National School Nurse Day. And we have some of our school nurses here with us tonight, so I'd like for them to stand so we can say thank you and how much we appreciate them.
Before we finish this part two, I wanted to recognize really quickly, thank you all so much, and Joshua Swift, Health Department, and your team that support. We have such a great partnership with our Health Department, so thank you guys so much for being here and just for how you help us every day.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very, very much. Next, Dr. Leslie Alexander, Chief of HR, will lead us in recognizing Teacher Appreciation Month.
So we are so excited to say thank you to our teachers. We've had a lot of fun celebrating, and we got a lot more celebrating left to do. We had about 250 beginning teachers come to our Promise Awards. That was a lot of fun. We will have a retirement breakfast for our teachers who are retiring at the end of the year, and then we invited 400 veteran teachers to our Second Annual Veteran Teacher Appreciation, so we look forward to celebrating with them too. But we have about 3,800 teachers, so that's a lot of teachers that we haven't celebrated in those three groups. So we really want to say thank you because we couldn't do it for our kids if it wasn't for our teachers. So I just encourage, even though this is Teacher Appreciation Month, this week is officially Teacher Appreciation Week. So if you haven't had the opportunity to reach out to a teacher or two or five and say thank you, please do because we need them, we want to encourage them, and appreciate them in every way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think on the behalf, on behalf of the board, we would just like to thank from the bottom of our hearts our teachers who are with us every day. We know you do a lot. We know you have a lot of challenges in classrooms, but also a lot of good things happening, and we know your hearts are huge, and that's why you're here for our kids. So thank you.
Next, Ektah Patel, Executive Director of Child Nutrition, will lead us in recognizing School Lunch Hero Day.
School Lunch Hero Day is held annually on the first Friday in the May in the honor of each person responsible for providing lunches to millions of children across America. This year took place on May 5. If you look forward to tasty food and full belly in school, you know exactly who you need to thank too. I want to say thank you to all my child nutrition team who play a big role in feeding children every day. They all get to be the first people to greet students in the morning, sharing a smile, and giving them high-fives and asking them, how are they feeling? All this provides a bright start to each Students' Day. They all are heroes in the cape because they make sure that our students eat well and ready to learn.
I'm Alicia Cruz. I'm the District Manager for Chartwell's K-12, and Ektah and I work in partnership in child nutrition. We have brought a short video to share with you all to highlight some of our school lunch heroes that do absolutely amazing work each and every day.
Hi, my name is Ms. Jane. I work at Dix Lathan Elementary School. I like working with the little kids and have always worked in food service, so it's a win-win situation for me.
Hi, I'm Faith. I'm at Smith Farm Elementary. I've been here since January, and I love coming to work every day to make sure that the kids get a happy and healthy meal every day.
It has been my passion to see the kids going to school and give them food that they're happy when they see it on the line.
I have been here almost 19 years, and I do this because I'd like the kids to get fed because there's so many that don't get a good meal during their home life. They need one here at school.
My favorite part about school nutrition is being able to see these children come into the school and just being able to serve them, being able to say good morning, really, and being a positive influence in their life through nutrition, through just being a friend.
I enjoy coming in every day, watching these children come through the service line, and knowing that we're making a difference in one person's life each and every.
I want to give the kids a wholesome meal so I know that their bellies are full when they go home.
I would say it's the relationship you develop. I have developed many relationships with the children. I've had many children come back to see me afterwards, and it's feeding the children.
Shout out to our school lunch heroes who really do a phenomenal job each and every day. Our team is one of close to 600, so it takes about 600 folks to make dreams happen for these kids each and every day. We serve about 40,000 meals daily, and our team serves up happy and healthy in everything they do. It's a great environment for kids to come in and be able to socialize and enjoy time with their friends and also enjoy a nutritious, healthy meal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, Superintendent McManus will present the Students' Demand Action Safe Storage Resolution.
Actually, they will present it if you all will come up. Thank you. While our students are walking up, yes, come on up. While our students are walking up, you could see tonight, actually, every time we're in a meeting, how many things we celebrate, how many people we celebrate every month. Tonight was another big round, but we are so lucky, we are so fortunate and blessed to have incredible employees in our school district, and they do the job because of our incredible students in our school district. And so what I will say is, this Students' Demand Action, this was not something, an idea, that me, staff, or anyone sitting up here had. This was an idea and a, by our students, and of determination and leadership, like incredible, like I have not seen. Like you all, you all had a vision for what you wanted to achieve. You came here, you did things the right way, you spoke up in a positive, convincing way, and you stayed at it until we said, you know what? We need to listen because kids bring out the most important things, and they are truly leaders. And so I'm going to turn it over. Who's going to do the honors? Are you, Rachel, going to do it? Or, right, all of it, Eva? Right, come on up, Rachel and Eva and team. You all can come up right behind, or you can stand in front, up to you. Come on up.
And before I read the resolution, I'd just like to emphasize how monumental this passage is. This resolution is a beam of hope in a nation that's plagued by gun violence, which has been perpetuated by our political polarization. So I just want to emphasize that in this resolution, people both liberal and conservative have come together to ensure that our parents are educated about storing their guns safely to protect us. And so I just hope that going forward, we can come together and see the gray area between our black and white perspectives in order to continue to pass good gun policies that will continue to protect us so that one day, we can all come to school and not be worried about being the next headline on the news of kids being shot. Thank you. All right, so here we go. Whereas the issue and apparent escalation of incidents involving firearms in the United States and in our communities is of great concern to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education. Whereas the board agrees with evidence that strongly suggests that secure firearm storage is an essential component to any effective strategy to keep our communities, our schools, and our students safe. Whereas an estimated 4.6 million American children live in households with at least one loaded unlocked firearm. Whereas every year, roughly 350 children under the age of 18 unintentionally shoot themselves or someone else, which is roughly one unintentional shooting per day, and 70% of these incidents take place inside a home.
Whereas another 700 children and teens die by gun suicide each year, most often using guns belonging to a family member. Whereas in incidents of gun violence on school grounds, 75% of active shooters are current students or recent graduates, and up to 80% of shooters under the age of 18 obtain their guns from their own home, a relative's home, or from friends. Whereas research shows that secure firearm storage practices are associated with up to an 85% reduction in the risk of unintentional firearm injuries among children and teens. Whereas the U.S. Secret Service National Threat Assessment Center recommends the importance of appropriate storage of weapons because many school attackers have used firearms acquired from their homes. Whereas across the country, lawmakers, community members, law enforcement agencies, and local leaders have worked together to implement public awareness campaigns, such as the Be Smart Program, which is endorsed by the National Parent Teacher Association and which encourages secure gun storage practices and highlights the public safety risks of unsecured guns. Whereas school districts across the country have joined the efforts of lawmakers, community members, and leaders to help inform the community about the dangers of improper firearm storage. Whereas keeping students, teachers, and school staff safe from the threat of gun violence should be the responsibility of all adult stakeholders. And whereas state law imposes criminal penalties on adults who fail to properly secure a firearm, allowing a minor access to that unsecured firearm. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education does hereby join the efforts of other school districts and community partners across the country in support of promoting safe firearm storage. Be it further resolved that the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education will support the superintendent and staff in updating the district website to include information explaining the importance and logistics of properly storing firearms. Be it further resolved that the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education will support the superintendent to create an appropriate communication to be published biannually to families of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools that explains the importance of secure firearm storage as a strategy to help protect its students from accessing irresponsibly stored guns. And be it further resolved that the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education and the superintendent is committed to working with local law enforcement agencies, health agencies, and other nonprofits to collaborate and increase efforts to inform parents of the risks associated with improper storage of firearms. Thank you.
At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you have signed up to speak, we ask that you sit near the aisle seats closest to the podium. Please be kind and respectful and direct your comments to me as chair. Know that we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. First, Alan Daniel.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent McManus. As I prepared for tonight, I searched for a copy of the current proposed budget in more detail than what's in the attached to the agenda and couldn't find it. It may be there, but I couldn't find it. So that would be my first request, would be that you would be more transparent to give those of us who might be concerned about the proposed budget an opportunity to see the actual budget, not just highlights of it, before you approve it. Because just what I did find was the proposed budget for '22-'23, which I'm guessing was posted on the website after it was approved last year. While that budget did show a decrease in the superintendent's office budget from 624,000 to 498,000, which is a $125,000 decrease, the deputy superintendent's budget increased from 4,275,000 to 6,424,000, which is a 50% increase, or $2.14 million. We did a good job on safety. That increased student safety. The budget went from 267,000 to 671,000. Instructional services increased 24,958,000 to 29,171,000. That's a 16.1% increase compared to the 50% increase in the deputy superintendent's budget, and a 29.8% increase in the attorney's budget. I would encourage each of you all to take a deep dive into the details of the budget. I know you're set to approve the proposed budget tonight. I hope you've had the opportunity to do a deeper dive than I had the opportunity to do, and I hope you will in the future make that document public for those of us who might be concerned. Thank you.
Mr. Daniel, I know we don't normally respond, but I wanted to tell you, because this is our third night coming, the whole document that shows every single part of it was posted two meetings ago. So like the, what you all got in your notebook, that entire document was posted two meetings ago. We can repost it for tonight, now, but it was posted because this is our third time coming back with a budget, so we posted it two weeks, two weeks ago. So if you want to see the details.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Stephanie Fisher Kennedy.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Fisher Kennedy, and I am the current PTSA president at Reynolds High School. I am here this evening to support the secure firearm storage efforts of the RJR Students' Demand Action and for all students in Winston-Salem Forsyth County school system. First, I wanted to say how proud I am of First, I wanted to say how proud I am of the RJR SDA group and all the time and energy they have given to make the WSFCS community a safer place. Research shows that 80% of shooters under 18 years of age easily gain access to firearms from their own home or from a friend or a relative. Secure firearm storage would help reduce this alarming statistic. It has been mentioned that firearms are obtained on the street. This may be accurate, but also good to know that many of the guns on the streets are guns that have been obtained by the seller illegally when guns are not safely secured. I grew up in a home with a father and a brother that love hunting. In our home, there was a safe that was locked at all times and only unlocked by my father. I'm pretty sure that's where my Christmas presents were stowed as well. My point is that smart storage is not an issue for any responsible gun owner. It's an easy decision. This resolution would support those who are being responsible. When the Nashville school shooting occurred in March, a sheriff spoke during a press conference about how resilient the youth of today are. I heard this before, and I find that to be false. I know of students that are strong but had a very difficult time returning to school after the tragedy at Mount Tabor. I know parents that panic when a simple call to notify of a bus running late turns into a "what if something has happened at my child's school?" This is not okay. This time of year, we get to celebrate all the accomplishments of our seniors.
I'm just going to finish. Voting yes on smart firearm storage will be a small act in letting our students know that we see them, we believe in them, and they deserve to attend school on a safe campus and a step forward in protecting our entire community.
Thank you. Michelle Jordan.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, board members, Ms. McManus. First, I want to sit here and just say and recognize the students that got up here and all the steps that they've taken to make this happen. I mean, I know that they've gone through the proper channels and the perseverance that they've been going through since the fall when they first brought this up. So I commend them bringing this forward in our community because it's something that needs to be happening nationally. And I also am here to speak about the budget. So I am just asking you guys to ask our county commissioners for everything that you guys can when you go to them in a few weeks. We all heard them at the town hall talking about how, you know, wait, Article 46 shouldn't wait. So let's make sure we're asking for anything that we can, especially for our ESPs. I know that we're going to be hearing about compression like we have been for the last two decades plus, but our ESPs definitely need us to be looking at what they can get to get them a wage increase. And I also want to hear about you guys advocating to our NCGA and something about a legislative agenda coming. It would really be, that's where we really need to be getting our money from, obviously, right? So we need to be fighting for every penny we can. So I thank you very much and have a great evening.
Thank you. Zoe Brokemburgh.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, members of the board, Superintendent McManus. My name is Zoe Brokemburgh, and I'm a current student at UNC Chapel Hill, but I grew up going to school here in Winston-Salem. I am speaking to you today because I have a little sister who goes to RJ Reynolds High School. Whenever she goes to school, I'm scared for her and I shouldn't have to be. I was a sophomore at Reynolds when the Parkland shooting happened in 2018. When we organized a walkout shortly after, I remember there being a concern from others about having that many people in one space in case someone brought a gun. Nothing has seemed to change since then, but I think that the secure storage resolution is a step in the right direction of making sure that our schools are a safe place where kids like my sister can learn and grow without their lives being put in danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Olivia Stubbs.
Good evening, board members. My name is Olivia Stubbs, and I'm a sophomore at Reynolds High School. I don't need to tell you all of the extremity of gun violence in our country. You've heard the facts from other people and you see the same news that I do. You open social media or turn on the TV to news of shootings multiple times a week, just like I do. Seeing these posts, seeing people discuss the latest tragedies like they're normal, fills me with fear and anger, not only for myself, but also for the friends, peers, and siblings about whom I worry every day. Seeing gun violence in the news makes it feel distant, but now it is closer than ever. Just recently, a six-year-old in Virginia was able to easily access a gun from his home, which resulted in the shooting and death of his teacher. That child shouldn't have had access to that gun in the first place. A secure storage resolution for our district will help to keep guns stored safely and keep students from accessing them quickly when they're in distress. When a gun is safely stored, it gives a teen or child more time to get the help they need and more time for adults around them to intervene. Currently, only 54% of gun owners secure their guns correctly. Implementing a secure storage resolution is a step towards preventing these tragedies. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Easter. Jenny Easter?
Sorry. It's okay. The applause was so loud.
Good evening, everyone. I have two specific asks on the budget tonight. First, I would like to address the classified salary adjustment. Michelle spoke on that. From the budget request spreadsheet that was posted, it says the line item was denied funding by our county commissioners last year, and I think it's important for the public and staff to know the reason that was given for why they wouldn't make it a priority. Years ago, when we went to them with the Just Ask campaign, Don Martin said he wanted pay comparisons for classified staff from counties that matched our size and demographic. He also had many other requests to meet before he would even consider it. Personally, I think it was a stall tactic, but I just want to make sure adjustments have been made this time around so we don't fall into the same situation where we continue to get questioned about the legitimacy of need for something they haven't tried to address for the 10 years I've been a teacher. I also wanted to remind you that earlier this year, at the county commissioner forums, we asked and they said that they would be willing to change the time of the budget meeting so that educators and the public could attend and actually be there to speak on this topic. I will work hard on my part to get staff to email and remind them of their promise, but I wanted to ask you all to advocate for it as well. My second ask for this, for tonight, is not so much funding for the district, but something that needs to be addressed at that meeting as well. I wish for you to speak up on and push to help provide Sheriff Kimbrough and our at-risk students. As we all know, middle and high school behavior has been ridiculous this year. Gang life and poverty are a very real thing here in Forsyth. When our families are not getting the food, shelter, and money they need to support their families, they turn to necessary means, which carry into our schools and affect other students and families in our classrooms. We do not currently have a Forsyth County juvenile detention center for support, and I know, I know, detention systems sound like a societal taboo nowadays. But I think while people still associate it with targeting certain demographics, we don't consider the real reform that can be made with them, especially with our amazing sheriff and officers that we have in this city. So many times, the default for dealing with dangerous and destructive behavior is pushing more training on teachers and schools to handle it. Instead of these issues being something educators must deal with and teach, or put the district in charge of funding and handling, we need the city to take responsibility in financially providing an extension of youth support. As it stands, some of our students in Winston-Salem commit criminal activity outside of the school but are back in our classrooms the next day with no consequence. We need centers where our children dealing with dangerous offenses can go to receive counseling that they otherwise would not get from their families because they cannot afford it, be provided law enforcement mentoring, incorporate skill development, treatment needs, and essentially give support for successful reintegration back into the community and our schools. I feel like this would be a perfect way to really do restorative justice from our code of conduct. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Antonasi.
Good evening. My comments, public comments tonight are on action item H, the continuation of environmental assessments on the site of the proposed Brunson Replacement School. If back in 2020, the prior board had approved the $42 million cost to rebuild Brunson Elementary on its current site on Hawthorne, three things would be true today. One, the students and staff of Brunson Elementary would currently be in a new and safe facility. Two, this board would not be in an environmental pickle. And three, I would be home tonight having dinner with my family. But here we are. For 20 months, I have spoken at these meetings about the risks to building a school on a state-identified hazardous site. I spoke to both the prior board of education and this board. I have filed handouts into the public records and I have emailed you. But to no avail, you bought the hazardous site. Not once has a single board member paused on spending more money on this endless money pit. Not once has a single board member acknowledged reading one of the three damning environmental reports paid with taxpayer money. I cannot convince the board to put Brunson on the discussion agenda. I cannot convince the superintendent to furnish timely committee meeting minutes for public view. I don't believe you understand the action item in front of you. Ordering a new environmental test is not a retest. You cannot replace a failed environmental test with a new score. The findings are cumulative, so when you unanimously approve tonight to spend another $80,000 on new testing, and worse yet, the design plans for an active vapor intrusion mitigation system, think about that. Think about what was discussed at the April 25 committee meeting. At the end of all of this, the school site would not be clean of contaminants. And finally, think about how you will explain your reasoning of your vote tonight to the students, parents, and staff of Brunson Elementary. So again, I have handouts for inclusion in the board book. I think we still have a board book, don't we? Do we? Is that still a thing? Okay, good. And as an email attachment for each board member, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Reverend Ford.
Good evening, each and every one of you. We have come a long way since the days when we were standing outside of this building in 2017 and 2018 protesting for a new Ashley school because no attention was being given to this issue by the school board. We have come a very long way thanks to the support of our current superintendent as well as the immediate past and present board. And at this point, we have made the kind of progress that means that new land has been secured and architectural design services funding has been set aside. What we know, however, is that SB 323 that would have allocated money for a new school has stalled in committee and will likely die there in the state senate. What we also know is that as this budget is being considered by this board to be sent on for approval to the county commission, as decisions are being made about how to allocate a remaining $38 million from the last bond, we do not see any money to build a new Ashley school. And so we have come a long way, but we have to finish the job. The community knows exactly what the community wants to see in terms of a new Ashley school. Thanks to the support of the superintendent and community meetings, we have a dream report that can be made available to anybody on the board at any time. We presented this over a year ago in a meeting with the superintendent, with the principal of the Ashley Academy, with other members of the senior staff. We have also sent out a statement this week, just yesterday, to each and every one of you. I thank you for those who reviewed it and responded to it. For others who have not, please check it out, check out the links. We need the support of this body right now to urge the county commission to do the right thing and allocate money for a new Ashley school. We know that budgets are moral documents. We know that from the federal to the state to the county to the municipal level, we find money for everything that is important to us. That's why we fought wars all over the world to the tunes of billions and trillions of dollars. So we know that the money for a new Ashley school can be found, but we need your support to make that happen, to urge the county commission in whose hands it falls now, to do that. The community has been waiting too long, too long. Well, the schools are built, and so we say again, as we said in 2017 and 2018, not another brick, not another bond. Let's get the money now. Let's build a new Ashley school. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda Mays.
Good evening, Chairwoman Kaplan, the board, Superintendent McManus. I want to come before you this evening to say thank you. Thank you for listening to our students' voices. Thank you for doing the secure proclamation for the secure arms, you know, the...
Gun storage.
Gun storage, yeah, just went out my head. But thank you for also going before the county commissioners again to look at increasing the pay for our classified staff as well, because that is something that we have been advocating for, for a very long time. Thank you. Thank you for recognizing teachers. Thank you for recognizing the nurses, because all of us together, working on the same common goals, is what's going to make our school district the place where children can learn and grow and where staff can be appreciated and be able to teach in an environment that is welcoming for them as well. Thank you. I just ask that we continue on this direction, that we are making certain that we are a welcoming environment for our students, for our families, as well as for our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Farrington.
Hi, I'm Lori Farrington. I'm a teacher here in the district, and I know everybody that's sitting there. So, good evening, y'all. I come not as a statistician at all. I don't have any numbers, and I did not even plan to speak, but I made a comment to my dear friend, Michelle, and I think that it bears sharing with you all. Approximately 22 years ago, my father stood in front of Dr. Martin and the school board. And when he stood, he did not stand here, he stood at a podium to the side, and he presented to them information about the compression of the classified personnel, because my father was the HR director for classified. And she said to me, Michelle said, "You need to tell them that." And the reason I need to tell you that is because my father walked to the podium, and this is what he, his thing, pulled his pants up because he was scared to death to talk to Dr. Martin. And we are sitting here asking for money for the same people and for the same reason to the same person. And so I hate, I hate to say that because I've said it to Dr. Martin himself, because I like to say my name, my last name, because people know who my father was in classified staff, and people appreciated what my father did for classified staff, because not only, not only whoever stated it before, but someone said, "We compare ourselves, our classified staff, to Wake County, to Mecklenburg, to Guilford. Why are we still lacking? Why are we still compressed?" And that's a commissioner thing. That's, I mean, it was a board thing, but you all have to take it to the commissioners as well. And so I sent you all some information about how to make a good legislative agenda, and I think that that would probably bear to, for all of us, teachers, when I go to sit up at the legislative offices, and I've spoken to our friends in Raleigh, and I speak to the $3,000 that we need per student spending, but I'd like to speak for our ESPs. I'd like to speak for the people who've been compressed, who are stuck in the same pay scale that they've been stuck in since my dad said it, and my father's been dead 20 years. So, I mean, that's, that's a harsh thing to think about, but I didn't, I haven't shared it with you all individually, because I've spoken to you all individually, but when she said, "Lori, you've got to say it," and then, and then she signed me up. I didn't sign myself up. Then she signed me up. I thought, it is time, I guess, you know, it's the prod in the rear that I needed to tell y'all that. So it's been a while coming, y'all, and if you need help with legislative stuff, let me know and I'll help you all. Sit down with it. I'm willing, I'm willing to put that out there, even though it has, it has little to bear. I think it bears, it bears witness of all your signatures to hand over to the commissioners. I think it bears, it bears witness of all your signatures to hand over to the commissioners to push something through. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Adam Cartwright and I am a senior at Mount Tabor High School. I would like to take this time to shed some light on the tragic event that occurred at our school on September 1st, 2021, and take you through my personal experience on this horrific day. This day started off as any other ordinary day. I attended my morning classes at Career Center and headed back to Tabor just in time for my third-period sports medicine class. However, as I got into the parking lot, I recognized that something was off. As I stepped out of my car, I was immediately escorted by an assistant principal along with a group of other students and taken into, taken into the building. Although this was unusual, I didn't think much of it at the time. Little did I know that there was an active shooter on campus just minutes before I had fled from that... Sorry. Little did I know that there is an active shooter on campus that had just fled from that exact parking lot just minutes before I had arrived. What happened during the next six hours is a bit of a blur to me and it still doesn't feel real. After being gathered into an unfamiliar locked room with some of my peers, I was informed of what was really going on. Well, not exactly. With all of the rumors circulating on social media, I was unsure of who to believe. I heard many people say that multiple people had been shot and that the shooter was going to other schools as well. And rumors like this only made the situation worse. We sat there in fear and uncertainty, not knowing what was going on for quite some time. Finally, we were informed of the truth. One student, William Chavez Reynard Miller Jr., had been shot and killed by another student in our school. I sat there and witnessed the pure agony and grief on many of William's close friends' faces as they were informed of the news, as these people were sequestered in the same room that I was. After watching the SWAT team break through the halls of my school with loaded guns, we were relocated to the auditorium. However, the tension did not stop there. While we were in the auditorium, a fight broke out, leading the police to pull a gun, and everyone broke down into chaos. We were all constantly on edge and still unsure of what was going on. Finally, we were sent on buses to the Coliseum where we were reunited with our parents after what felt like the longest day of our lives. I'm not sharing this story with you to make my school look bad in any way. The fact of the matter is that this could have happened in any school in all of the WSFCS school district, and I think I speak on behalf of all Tabor students in saying that this incident does not define our school. The problem is, guns are everywhere, and without proper storage and firearm safety, we are at risk of this becoming a more common occurrence. As I move on to college, I feel as if it is my duty to ensure that young children feel safe at school. I have two younger siblings myself, and I certainly wouldn't want them to go through what I did on that dreaded day. The Secure Storage Resolution is a step in the right direction in making our schools a much safer environment as it would prevent children from accessing their parents' weapons at home and bringing them to school. It certainly wouldn't solve the issue of guns by itself, but it makes me hopeful that we could pass more legislation to further prevent this issue. With measures like secure storage in place, I'm confident that the number of gun-related incidents at school will vastly decrease. This will make it to where our future generations will be able to feel safe in school without having to worry about the threat of guns. After all, is that really too much to ask? Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Our next order of business is the superintendent's update.
Thank you. So I know we've, we've already highlighted this, but I wanted once again to say Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of our teachers. This week, there's lots of celebrations happening throughout the district, and so just thank you so much. We, we are, we are very fortunate to have such committed educators who show up every day for our kids, and, and so thank you so much, teachers. And this kind of highlighted a lot of our educators last week. If you were not able to attend, this is on the front page of our website. But congratulations to all our winners representing the different categories. It was a great, great event last week, and so once again, congratulations. Parent advisory, just giving an update of our Parent Guardian Advisory Council. We ended up with over 800 applicants, and a team of people read through all of them and we got it down to 50. And that's basically taking about 10 per area, north, south, east, west, and spire, making sure that we have representation from all over. And so the, the first meeting will be Thursday, May 18th, 5:30 to 7:30. I will also say that for those 750 that were not selected for this year, this will be a yearly process. But also, we're gonna, we're gonna host town halls next year for parents throughout the community so those that may not be on this regular meeting can actually still come and have a place to provide input and dialogue and solutions, and, and so we're gonna plan that as well for next year. I think it's incredible that we had 800 applicants for this advisory. May is mental health month, awareness month, as well as so many other things, but I think this is really critical. There has been so much, last week, I think I was on, it was last week, I think, was on a panel along with our sheriff, our chief of police, one of our school counselors, and someone from Triad Restorative Justice who works in our schools with our youth. And it's just, this is a real issue within, for our youth and, and for honestly for adults as well right now, is mental health. And so we are taking this very seriously, and I wanted, on the next slide, for you to see some of, some of the things that are happening. We are so fortunate to have a lot of school-based community partners who provide mental health supports. We have partners throughout the, the community that we are regularly referring students to for support. We also have five licensed behavioral health professionals with School Health Alliance, who is an incredible partner of ours as well. We've been having trauma resilient training with CrossNor, again, another community partner working with us. The SEL curriculum in every school is something that is, is just, it's happening across the board for our students so they have time to talk and learn about important concepts and, and such as empathy and, and other, other characteristics that we want our students to be learning. We added social workers this year, 30 more, and they will continue next year. This is the first year we added those 30, they'll continue next year. These are licensed therapists who are also supporting our students. We've added mentoring programs, so I think that, and this is just some of what we are, we've added as part of our mental health plan. So Dr. Stokes, thank you and your team. Our, our student services team, and that's everyone, social worker, psychologists, our counselors, our nurses, all of the staff work day and night to, to, to make sure that we are addressing the mental health needs of our students. But it is, it is, even with all of that, we need more, and it is a community-wide effort. And so just wanted to make sure I highlight that this evening. Also, last but not least, one of the things I wanted to follow up with the board on is we had, it's, and I thought tonight because we just got the data, like hot off the press. But again, metal detection, I, I love the fact that our students are here on a proactive side, which is, let's lock up our weapons, whoever has them, lock them up, don't allow them to be out there. But I did want to share some of the results. We, we surveyed all middle and high schoolers in our school district, and so I'm just gonna share a little bit of, of that data with you. It may come up again later if, if we, as we get into maybe another safety workshop or anything addressing safety in the future. But this first question was about how do kids feel, how, do you feel safe at school? Again, I think our total number, and I wrote it down so I don't forget, our total number of respondents, let's see, I have it in my notes, was 9,549 students responded, which is a really good response rate. We've got more than that in middle and high, I think we have about 24,000, something like that. But 9,000 students taking time to fill this out was pretty, was, was I think a good number. And so you can see what they're saying about, about how feeling safe, very safe, somewhat safe, unsafe, or very unsafe. How do these metal detectors make you, in your school, make you feel? And you can see, again, some feel much safer, some feel somewhat safer. So that's probably about, what, close to 60 and then close to 20, so it gets close to 80%. And then you have less safe and, and not safe. How frequently should they be used in schools? This was another question we asked. Again, never, rarely, sometimes was close to 40% and frequently was 20. So close to 60% felt sometimes or frequently. And then the last question is, would you like to see them used every day? Close to 70 said no. So I mean, just, I thought this was good data. Again, we're not, it's just a first data source. We'll continue to, to talk more to our students, talk more to our staff, our families as we make decisions for, for what we know as the hardening of schools. And it's very appropriate to think about the mental health part of this and all those supports is really the most critical part of this for future success. But the hardening is also a part that gives people some, some sense of, of security. And so listening to our students, as you all know, in the middle school forum, that's where it first came up, and that's why we did this survey. So again, just wanted you to see those preliminary results of what we have, and we'll just, it'll be part of more discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is discussion items. First, Lauren Richards, Chief Operations Officer, will present the Smart Bus Safety Pilot Program Fund Award and the RFP update.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, members of the board, and Superintendent McManus. I came and spoke to you all in a committee meeting back in February about the Smart Bus Pilot Program. And so some of these slides I'm gonna run through pretty quickly, but there's some detail that I want to make sure we share with our families in the community this evening. So we were awarded funds through the State Fiscal Recovery Funds, excuse me, I always screw that up, to be able to support new technology in our transportation department. And so we were awarded just under $1.5 million to support communications and technology and just under $500,000 to support internet connectivity. I'm not gonna speak on the internet connectivity this evening. Kevin Sherrill will be giving you guys an update in an upcoming workshop on technology, and, and we'll talk about that item there. So along with these funds came some rules that we had to adhere to. Any vendor that we were looking to contract with had to be able to meet 10 parameters as part of the state bill to be able to do business in the state of North Carolina. Part of that is meeting some of the same equivalent reporting tactics and budgetary items that the state requires all counties throughout the state to provide via the TIMs program. There were 21 counties across the state that were awarded similar funds based on their district size to go out to bid and pursue these services. We waited a little bit to kind of see what some of these other counties were gonna do, what their bids were gonna look like, and what kind of companies came to the table. But we did get this kicked off in December, and we are ready to bring a decision to you all this evening. So just to highlight a few of the items on that list of 10, you see a few here that are really the most forward-facing items. Some others are a little bit more technical in the background. And so it's making sure that there's routing software capabilities to support our efficiencies. GPS, having real-time updates to be able to support what our parents can see and what our department can see while our buses are on the road. The possible option for student ridership tracking, I'll talk about that one here in a little bit as well. Parent app enhancements to support, again, what our parents can see while our buses are on the road. Information on tablets and the electronic capability of bus drivers being able to do pre- and post-trips using those tablets and not having to do them in a manual capacity. And also, there being internet connectivity on the buses. So I'm gonna be very brief on this slide. I shared this back in February, we did go through an RFP process. We had four vendors come to the table. Of those four, after preliminary interviews, we felt that there were three that were pretty reasonable fits for Winston-Salem, Forsyth County schools. We did additional interviews, all-day demos with those three vendors, where they actually went out into the field with bus drivers, mechanics, our routing team, and the transportation team that does this every single day. It was really exciting. They got to see how the tablets work, how turn-by-turn directions work, and how everything works together seamlessly to try to support efficient routing for our families. Ooh, I skipped one. Sorry. So of those three, after taking into consideration all of the criteria in our rubrics, and those are published for you and simply for you to review for both of the different segments that we did in interviews, we elected to go with Edgelog Technologies. We felt like this was the best fit for our district, and those contracts are provided for you this evening for approval as well. Staff is desiring to try to kick these contracts off as quick as possible. We'd like to do a soft rollout for our summer school program so that parents can get a small dose of what this new parent app will look like and, and test some different things, and then do a final full rollout for our fall transportation efforts. So I'm not gonna hit every bullet point on this slide for you, but there are a few different pieces that I want to call out in the next item. So when we looked at software, you know, pricing was of course important, I'll show you that a little bit later. The pricing was competitive across all bidders. We felt like Edgelog provided opportunities to be customizable in our routing. Good data, a simplified transition based on the systems that we are currently used. We, we want to make sure that we are using this software and making efficient runs. We know we have a bus driver shortage, no one's, no one's a stranger to that. And so we really need to be able to work in systems that we're comfortable with, that, that can produce good data. Ability to make changes in real time, that was an item that really stuck out for the staff because we know we do need to have substitute bus drivers and be able to make those instant changes that can get out into the field for the buses and for our parents to see. School boundaries is a little bit of a, a back-of-the-house item for us, but we have to build in the school boundaries that we have for our residential and our choice zones and, and many other maps that get overlaid onto the general county maps. And this is something that can be imported and updated and does not have to be manually done, which is a huge feat for the staff because that is an ongoing practice that we do. When it comes to GPS, Edgelog works with a company called Sam Sara, and that is the GPS provider. Their pings come in at about three seconds, which is virtually real-time. This was one of the items that staff was most impressed about during their demos to see how quickly the data was received on the tablet for the driver and then how quickly it came into the parent portal. So the parent app, currently, we have Here Comes the Bus, the new app that will be available to parents is called Parent Portal. If you're listening at home or in the audience, you can Google that and kind of go through and do a tutorial and a demo. It is pretty neat, we are excited about it. It has some automatic, automated, automatic notifications that parents can get on their bus routes. Again, with that real-time data, they should be able to receive those instantaneously. It gives parents the option to select that they need transportation through the app if they are using it. That is something that's very new for us and we're very excited about. Oftentimes, our families wait until open house to come and say, "I need a bus stop." And, and honestly, it's, it's too late. It's very, very hard to get students placed on buses, especially if it's a new stop a few days before school starts. And so we're gonna do a lot of messaging coming up here the end of May and throughout the summer to encourage parents to get on this app when it is live and ready to go and to also go through the necessary steps to request bus stops early so we can get students routed and they can come to open house and get that information and not be waiting on a bus stop for the first day of school. Excuse me. There are regular notifications that we can make adjustments in the system when we have sub-buses and we have to make last-minute changes, we can push out messages. And there's a lot of automation that goes along with this parent app that we are really excited about and staff was able to see during the demo. So last but not least, this is the funding information for this program. And so the first several lines, you'll see some itemized information about year-one costs. And so for year one, we have new equipment that we're purchasing to be able to use, so there's a capital investment there. Those tablets are, have a five-year warranty on them, that was on a previous slide. There is installation that goes along with installing all of the GPS tablets, all the monitoring and making sure everything's working because one of the things that this software does is it says to us, "The bus stopped. The stop arm went out, the doors opened, the driver made the stop for X number of seconds, the driver closed the doors, the amber lights came in, and the bus continued to roll." And so we can see that level of detail when a bus driver makes a stop. There's also this year, year-one service and software costs, so you see total year-one costs that does come in under the funding that was allocated. This funding has a deadline of June, or excuse me, January of 2025. And so with the year-two service costs, there would be enough funds remaining in the pilot, the Smart Bus Pilot Program to fund year-two as well, which we're really excited about. And so at that time, I'll turn it over to questions from any of the board members.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. So my first question is, so I know the first couple of slides, it was 21, 21 other counties. Are those, are those like actual counties or like 21 LEAs?
Uh, LEAs.
Okay.
Yes. Good point of clarity. Good point of clarity.
And so the, the ongoing cost, so I know that sometimes if like a, there's, there's money to kind of get the, you know, for the purchase of the materials and then the initial support, but I'm thinking like ongoing to support those, are we going to be responsible for fixing those or addressing issues kind of in-house or like how is that going to work?
We would be. So one of the goals of the pilot program is that the state was interested in pursuing other things out there and seeing what that looks like before they potentially do a state bid and do statewide. So there is the possibility that the state will pick up some of these costs long-term throughout all counties or all LEAs. We currently use a software to provide tablets and GPS now. We did that several years ago. And so that has been something that we have taken on locally to pay for, to be able to have the support that our county needs. So the long-term goal here is that all of these funds are things that would be supported with the state funds as our, our yellow bus fleet is all state-funded.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Word member K.
So when you tell parents that are going to be really excited about a new parent portal versus Here Comes the Bus, that there is the opportunity to look through it, when is there an estimated time for it to actually go live so that they can start working ahead and thinking about things? Do we have a date or no?
So we are hoping to use the new parent portal for summer school. We will have a smaller population during that time where we can try to work through some different kinks. In conversations with a few other districts, they went live with everything in August and there's always hiccups when you do that. We expect those. You have to work through them, but we are hoping to have everything live in June. I can't give you a specific date. A lot of that depends on contracts and equipment to be purchased and be installed. But we're hoping to kick that off in summer, start messaging out to families, go ahead if you're using Here Comes the Bus, go ahead and sign up in Parent Portal, get that, get that out there. We'll be working with Brent Campbell, the communications team and our schools to push that as often as we can and hope that we get everyone using it and they get comfortable with it to be ready to roll in August.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, Tommy Krantz, our Chief Financial Officer, will lead us in the superintendent's recommended request from the local county commissioners, 2023-2024 budget.
I'm just going to quickly go over what you've got in front of you. So at this point in time of the year, we want to move forward with the county commission so we present what our needs are from a local fund standpoint. This budget was developed based off of where we stand today with the best information from talking to people in state government and talking to fellow CFOs within the state of what they're hearing regarding projected pay raises, projected increases in the state retirement, projected increases in the state health system, all of which makes it a very fluid still document in that we do not know what exactly the state will adopt. This budget, I think, is fair. It's 5%, but the actual amount may be slightly higher or could be slightly lower than what we're projecting today. On the salary side, we're projecting out a 5% increase. The retirement, we have projected that to go from 24.5% to 25.25%. So for every dollar payroll, we as a district are spending another 25 cents to the state on the retirement side. The FICA is with the, is flat at 7.65%, but that's on the new dollars that are coming in. The workers' comp is based off of the dollars that we pay on our salary side and that's a minor increase. The health insurance, we've projected that to increase at $300. The actual could be somewhere probably between $222 to $300, giving us a total salary side of 9.255 million. That doesn't have any new positions. That says on the existing base of employees, this is what a 5% increase would be. And there is some rounding that we do to give us some cushion depending on how things move up or down. The other thing that's in here is you recall on Article 46. So on Article 46, the dollars that come in will be recorded in a restricted revenue account. We as a district pay the first $19 million or the base that the county adopted and then everything above that comes out of Article 46. What we are projecting for fiscal year 2023 is that we will be slightly above the total of the supplements, including the benefit-related costs. We'll be slightly above the dollars that are coming in from the, the county government to the tune of almost $2 million. So that's in our request to help cushion, okay, that we maintain the supplement as much as we can with the dollar amount that's there today. And everybody keeps getting essentially what they received in the past. What will be a challenge is going forward with steps. Right now, the age of our work, of our instructional staff is at 19.9 years, which is basically at the halfway point of a 40-step, which is how many steps we have in our salary side. On the classified, that was the amount we asked for last year. What that would do is address the classified compression schedule, which impacts about 3,000 employees out of a district total, including subs of almost 8,000 employees. So a significant portion of our staff would be impacted by the classified side. The other ones are the custodial that we talked about with the change in the contract, the desire to increase the services provided to our schools. That's a $2 million increase. And then the school resource officers, 600,000 was coming from the county sheriff's department and then 60,000 is coming from the city of Kernersville, giving us an ask of 16.352 million on local funds only, which you see under the state public school fund side and the federal grant side is if we do a 5% raise, the people that are funded out of the state and the people that are funded outside of federal, what that will look like. Okay? Any questions?
I wanted to remind one other thing that I think is really significant, and that is with the 4.3 that we're asking for for classified, we have, we also were able to capture within our budget up of the 156 that is recurring, that would be recurring, one point, was it 1.3 million in positions that I, we did not refill as they opened in central office last year? So 1.3 million plus the 4 million. So we are looking at about a 6.2, was it, what was it?
About 6 million, six.
About 6 million, a little bit over 6 million that we will put directly toward classified salaries and that is getting them to market rate. We met, just for an example, we met last week with our supervisors of all of our maintenance trades. And these are our plumbers and our electricians and all those people in the field that if they went to private industry could be making so much more. I mean, if they just went to Walmart, they're making more, I'll just say. And so we looking at just that group to get them to market rate and, and, and keep them in our system because they're the ones that show up every day to do all of our repairs and our paintings and our plumbing and all of that. You know, about one point, I think it's about 1.6 million we could get them. So that 6 million, we're going to work on all of those groups. We're looking now at the market rate for all and that's bus drivers and TAs and everybody, custodians and everybody that's in that classified category. So we're excited if this passes plus the 1.2 that we are, 1.4, whatever that was that we have saved, we have 6 million to work with. We really think that we could be very strategic this summer and, and, and get us next year on a better, better ground, I mean, a better place for our classified employees. So just wanted to highlight that. It's, this is very important for us and I'm, I'm really hoping all goes well with our request.
So I just wanted to say, I do not have any questions, but that is a good thing because we have met about this budget several times, both as a group, also in small groups. Both you, Tricia, as well as Tommy have done an excellent job in answering all of my questions. I feel very familiar with the budget and our budget request and I want to thank both of you and Tommy, you and your team for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
I echo what Vice Chair Bohannon just said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Yes.
I just wanted to ask if we have the backup for the comparables for the, to justify the increases.
On, you're talking about like on the classified side?
Yes.
We are, we have it in certain positions, not in all of them, but like for example, on the maintenance side, that's been developed. It's been compared to the market. Like we just did the upgrades on the school financial managers, we're calling, lead financial secretaries. That was done and we have the market comparisons. And so we're developing the plan based off of each, you know, each trade. So bus drivers, Guilford, for example, is shooting for a $17 an hour rate. You know, we're currently sitting at $15 an hour. The challenge that we have is the amount of steps. That's what makes this get to be significant from a cost standpoint. And another thing is to, let's take, for example, I'll give you a quick comparison. If I'm an employee making $32,000 a year, okay, whatever position I'm in, the district pays out another $17,000 per person on retirement, health, life and dental. And you'd see the benefit as you get near retirement age, my age today, but you know, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, you didn't think about that. And that's where the challenge becomes, in my opinion, is trying to get to a competitive market rate in the private sector with a benefit structure that you don't have a choice about. You know, it's not like in the private sector where when I am in my own company, I could offer and develop the plan as I see fit. Did I do a 401K for retirement? You know what I'm saying? You had options. We don't have that particular option.
How about, how about comparing apples to apples though, county to county with, you know, other school systems?
We, we have beaten, I mean, under Ms. McManus's leadership, we've beaten Guilford. We've done it across the board on teachers, but one of the things that they're striving for this year is to get their supplements $100 higher, higher than ours, just to say they're beating, they're beating us. And I think you're going to see, Wake County, I know, is, is struggling getting positions and talking to their CFOs. Charlotte's struggling getting positions. All of us are out there just struggling. So I think that the market's just going to keep growing. It's not going to go backwards. But yes, ma'am, we try to stay as current as we can on that market side.
Yeah, I saw yesterday on, when you're thinking about all the surrounding districts that are close and competing for talent, I saw a post yesterday, I probably shouldn't say this out loud since this will be televised, but it was for a school psychologist post in a small district. I'm not going to say the one, how about that? With a $30,000 signing bonus. And so that is how, even though all the superintendents come together and complain about that kind of stuff, that is the reality and it's, it's, yeah. So I hope, I hope we don't lose one of our psychologists to that $30,000. I almost didn't want to tell you, but I wanted to paint the picture of, of the reality right now around staffing. So we want to keep, we want to keep our folks. I don't, I think signing bonuses like that, I get why people do it. I don't think they go a long way for the people sitting in the job, working hard every day. And so I, we got to retain our great talent so we're not losing people to try to then do these massive signing bonuses, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much. Our next order of business is action items. Consider approval of the Smart Bus Safety Program. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion was made by Vice Chair Bohannon, a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the 2023-2024 budget request.
Move to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion was made by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Safe Storage Resolution. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do, okay. So a motion was made by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of West Forsyth High School Roof Design Contract. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Coon. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of Facilities Capital Funding Request. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion was made by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Do I have any discussion?
It's not really discussion. I think it's just important to make a statement for the community that this is, this is a tranche of funding and we're going, this is a living document and that we recognize that there is an inordinate amount of need that covers probably upwards of 400, 500 million dollars. And so this is just a starting point and I think it's just really important to acknowledge that for the community.
Thank you. Any other comments? So we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion, all in favor. Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the contract with Kagan for professional development. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion was made by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Next, consider approval of the purchase of the additional Entourage Table. Do I have a motion?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion was made by Board Member Brown Gaither, a second by Board Member Coon. Any discussion?
Yes, sorry. Is it just one table? I thought it was more than one.
An additional table.
Oh, an additional table from the, okay, all right, okay, all right.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Brunson S and M E Continued Environmental Services Review Approval. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so a motion was made by Board Member Coon, a second by Board Member Miller. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, so we have seven in favor, one opposed, motion passes. Next, consider approval of the Philo-TerraCon CMT SI Geotechnical Services Contract Review Approval. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion was made by Board Member Crowley, a second by Vice Chair Bohannon. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Our next order of business is announcements. Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023 will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. Before we begin the section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on almost anything, let me say to our Cable 2 viewers, thank you for watching and this will conclude our broadcast.
You're watching Cable 2.